We've got a very special and probably the most special pledge of allegiance that I've ever experienced here at this school district, and we've got little Miss Scarlett is going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for letting us be here tonight. I pray that you'd give us wisdom as we conduct the school's business. Thank you for your mercy and grace. It's in Jesus' name we pray.
Told many in order, we do have a quorum, all members present. Excuse me, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
First by Dwayne.
Second.
Second by Kyle. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Special reports.
We have Miss Scarlett Parrotty here with us to read to us tonight, and she came over today and visited the admin and toured it and got familiar with the area. And she has something special she's going to read to us. Start it. So Scarlett is going to be reading a story to us in Braille.
Mac and Tab. Tab is a cat. Tab has a towel. The towel is Mac. Mac is a rat. Mac has a cap. Tab has a nap on the mat. Mac has a nap on tab. The hem is an e-hand. The hem is for tab. The hem is for tab. Tab has a nap. Mac has the hem. Tab is Mac at Mac. Mac has the hem. The tab is on the mat. The tab is on tab. Mac has the hem. Tab has the tab. Mac and Tab are towels.
That's awesome. So I want to point out a couple of keepers. This is Miss Karen Ritchie, and she is Scarlett's parent. And Miss Karen is her kindergarten teacher, and they're always bragging on you, Miss Scarlett. Can I read some things that Miss Ritchie wrote about you?
Yes, can I read them?
I have no doubt you could tomorrow. Well, maybe Miss Karen could run it through the machine and fix it where you'll have it as a keepsake. If we do that. I'm going to read it though. It says, "As we approach the end of kindergarten, Scarlett has been working on reading and writing alphabetic words, signs, red words, layers one and two, initial letter contractions, lower word signs, strong contractions, and strong word signs. She can write full sentences starting with a capital letter and ending with punctuation. She is reading forty words a minute. She has been reading kindergarten phonics decodable books. In math, we are working on double-digit subtraction and addition. She's been working on reading and writing numbers over a hundred. She's mastered place value, ones, tens, and hundreds. She is a brilliant girl. I have loved working next to her for the past three years, learning and growing together." So Scarlett joined us as a pre-K student, and Miss Karen's been with her through two years of kindergarten. Super exciting. But yes, that would be an awesome keepsake to have that friend as well. Thank you, Scarlett.
Hey, here I am, you guys. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. Miss Karen? Miss Karen? Why just say it?
Yeah, come back in here.
Come here, Karen.
She's just a kindergarten girl.
Yeah, and that fifty words per minute, that's like in the first grade, isn't it?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, in the first grade. That girl doesn't forget anything ever. And you can, she'll remember every one of your names if you introduced her.
Your voice.
Yeah, your voice.
She's amazing.
She's brilliant. And I just have to say, you saw her team, though her parents, her products, the high school, she has an amazing team. Sorry, now I get in ahead of Tanya. Anyway. I gave her this under.
Don't crush it off. Tell us.
Say it again. She's amazing. We're so proud.
Definitely should be. Um, special reports, next up.
No, we have another, yes. Sorry. Yes, we have another special thing. Mr. Taylor, come on up here.
We're proud of.
Okay, now listen.
We're proud of. Hey, we're proud of you. Yeah, we're proud of you, but you've got a hard act of heart.
This is amazing.
Let me do this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna present you guys with two, two things. Okay. This is the 2020 yearbook that I'd like the board to have. I'm just gonna take one, pass it around there. And I'd also like to present, uh, present to you this year's yearbook as well that just came in, uh, just for each of you, and I'll explain here in a bit. Hopefully everyone gets a chance to have one. Some of you might already have one. You've got kiddos up there already.
I think we need to back up and explain for everybody a lot who Mr. Taylor is. Mr. Taylor is our. He teaches at the middle school, and he does yearbook at the middle school along with some amazing artwork.
And bicycling.
Yes, that's true.
And, and, uh, thank you for letting me do that. That's been wonderful. I, I wanted to present this, uh, both of these yearbooks, uh, the, the, this year is just for the effort that our, our kiddos put into, to this. The 2020 yearbook is a special book. What you're holding is, um, a collection of moments like what we just saw. Moments that our kids got trained and educated to become aware of. And for middle schoolers to be aware of moments that are happening before you is, is something that we want all of our kids to know. Cause they don't sometimes see how special their growth is, how strong their growth is, the mountains that they are climbing on a daily basis. But I got a group of kids, then in 2020, pulled together something, and I wish they could be here tonight. One of them's saying, I'm just trying to round up a bunch of them, but they're, you're all like, uh, this, this is, but I want to read their names, and I want to explain the significance of the book. So this is who made the book. Adalina Osselbrooks, Cammie Coggins, Gypsy Colleen, Brooke Miller, Ashlyn Owens, Claire Spurlock, Ruger Thomas, and Audrey Tobin. Now, some of you may be familiar with those names. And every one of these students had to be trained on what to do to put this book together. They had to learn journalism. They had to learn how to develop a theme. They had to learn design. They had to learn photography. They had to learn social skills on how to interact and conduct an interview. They had to learn all the computer programming skills. They had to learn about marketing. Now, for this, they sent this book into a national, international competition, the Life Touch Awards. For two years in a row before this, we, we took second place. We were proud of that. But we said we could, we could do more. We've got more to grow. We've got more to climb. And they climbed. And they climbed during a pandemic, and they finished this book remotely, which was amazing. This book took first place internationally. Life Book hosts seventeen thousand books nationwide between the United States and Canada. This book puts Huntsville on the map for the top of the top to look at. Other schools are looking our little old town's effort, these kids' efforts on what they accomplished. It blows my mind. This is another yearbook moment. That's the beauty of being in a yearbook. You see moments like what we just saw just a moment ago, and you see moments like that every day. It inspires you. It makes you want to show up. It makes you full of passion for what you do. And it excites you for the next moment that's going to happen. So I hope that you get excited looking at these books. And if you guys know these kids that I read out, give them a high five and handshake and a hug. I got to do that to Ruger. He just found out this afternoon that he was a part of that. Some of these kids just don't know the, the significance of that wow. But I wish they could be here today. But I'm proud to be a part of what they accomplished and to present that to all of us here. Our students go a long way, and, uh, they can offer a lot. We're just proud to, to see their strengths, like this book is titled for this year, and to have seen their climb and their journey. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Is there any extra results to say?
Connor doesn't have one of these.
Then she gets one. Thank you all very much.
Big stuff. All right. Next up, uh, secretary of reports.
First, we have the comparison report. Any questions on that? A few. Notice on expenditures, they're up quite a bit. Fuel alone, twelve thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars per. He's, he's watching for another one. He's proud of it.
He's proud of fuel.
Information about it.
Do you want me to go ahead and go?
This is our Skills USA group that's going to be speaking a little bit later.
Revenue is up too. Is that going to be sustained or is that just, this is the way it came in versus?
At the end, we were not too awful far off.
Any questions?
Next, we have the enrollment report, and Mr. Warren does a great job putting that together.
Well. Right. Up fifteen from last month and thirty-eight from the same time last, or same board meeting last year, and forty-four from last day of school last year. Overall, enrollment right now.
Every campus does gain.
St. Paul, really?
St. Paul had a kind of interesting month for sure. The elementary, I think it was five thousand seven grade levels gained at least a student, if I remember right.
Any questions?
Question? Okay. Administration reports.
Mr. Warren, you just.
I'll keep it going. I really only have one thing. The, the, uh, our standards window, which is our online system for standards and insurance, closed on May first. We were accredited like we had thought we were going to be. No cited, no citations or probationary status or anything like that, so. Wolverine. That was it. That's really my only, only thing to report this month.
But that's a big deal.
Yeah, a year's worth of sweating.
As far as technology goes, we're really just trucking along, getting ready to get into the grind on our summer projects and, and that kind of stuff while the teachers and students are away. Uh, one exciting piece of news, I don't, I believe I mentioned a couple of months ago that we were applying for, um, some ECF funding, emergency connectivity funding provided by USAC. Um, it was part of the stimulus three package, and, um, so we have been, we're eligible for one thousand two hundred and seventy-two Chromebooks that, uh, will be paid full. Uh, so we don't, so that'll be, uh, so we'll be receiving those. Um, so that is awesome. So we're, we're excited about that. So that'll go a long ways with, um, getting some of our older models replaced and getting those fixed. So we're excited about that.
Oh, in athletics, we're winding up spring sports, which I'll talk a little bit more about here in just a minute, but, uh, getting ready for, uh, the field and the gym, ready for senior awards and for graduation. Uh, we have summer camps coming up, the cheer, uh, volleyball's coming up, uh, football, and girls and boys basketball will be we engineer. So lots, lots getting ready to happen in the next few weeks down there. As far as spring sports, uh, start with St. Paul, their track team qualified seven for state, uh, track this year. And a couple of, uh, their students stood out. Sebastian Yegi finished third in the long jump and the triple jump at state. And Trinity Davis, uh, and this one is kind of a surprise. She finished second in state in pole vault. Uh, so she qualified as an all-state for St. Paul for, uh, one A track, which is really amazing since we don't really have pole vault. So we don't have any tracks around here. Uh, for our track up here in Huntsville, uh, we had a couple, uh, qualify for state, Matt Siska, senior. Uh, he won the district one-ten hurdles, finished second district in the three-hundred hurdles. And in state, he, uh, ran eleventh in the one-ten, ninth in the three-hundred. Um, and Avery Dunn, who is a freshman, mind you, uh, won the, uh, sixteen-hundred and the thirty-two-hundred at district, won both of them as a freshman. And then at state, she finished seventh in the sixteen-hundred and fifth in the thirty-two-hundred, uh, as a ninth grader. So, you know, she's, see, the world's ahead of her. So real proud of, uh, both of those, uh, athletes. And, uh, baseball, who is still going on right now, uh, they actually, uh, all four teams from our conference, one through four went down to Morelton, uh, to play that conference down there. They're the top four teams, and we swept them. And, uh, our, uh, hospital team came home with this. Region champion, first one since nineteen eighty-seven. So real proud of those guys, uh, and coaches, uh, for their accomplishments and they're playing, uh, Friday, uh, in Nashville at state, they play at three o'clock on Friday. Don't know who we play yet, but, uh, they're going to be scouting that out on Thursday to see, so anyway. They're, they, they gotta buy the first round, so basically they have to win two games to get to the championship. So it's, it's a, a good path for them. Real, real proud of those guys. Anyway, everything else is, spring football's going. Just getting ready for the summer. Going to get Steve and his guys down there to help us do some repairs. He didn't know that, did he?
Oh, there's always plenty to do. Tom said, we're just trying to make it till the end of the year so we can get our summer project started. We've got a, quite a long list of stuff that we need to try to accomplish this summer. All of our state inspections are right in line, most of those are scheduled, I'm waiting on a couple more to call me back. Should have plenty of time to get those done, all those have to be done by June the thirtieth. The custodial side, uh, everything's going pretty good. We've got a couple of people off, one that's been on guard leave and, uh, I'd like to commend a couple of them in at the high school, Harold and Johnny. They have stepped up and worked double shifts while he was gone and I sure appreciate their efforts. And, uh, so as I said, it's just kind of normal, everyday routine right now. Thanks, Steve.
The food service department is just kind of in the year out in a good note and the ladies have been more busy generating for field trips for the kids throughout the district. I think that's a great thing because a lot of these kids, they've never even had the opportunity or chance to go on a field trip. So we're all really excited about being able to take part in helping them to enjoy those at the end of the year. So everything else is going good.
Thank you.
Uh, St. Paul, you know, graduations are coming up, we got, uh, high school graduation Friday night at seven P M in the gym. And then we got pre-K graduation, May the twenty-third and kindergarten at four. And then the kindergarten graduation will be after at five-thirty. Our, uh, C and A kids, uh, got three girls that were in the C and A program with some of Roxanne's kids here at Huntsville, they graduated last Friday night from, uh, Harrison and that was fun to go see, to get to see the kids. And, uh, as Tina said, you know, we got some field trips coming up, uh, some of our little kids are taking their first one tomorrow. And, uh, you know, weather's supposed to be nice and, uh, real excited for those kids to get to take a field trip. And, you know, we're just working, we got three weeks of school left and just trying to finish up strong.
Thank you, Bruce.
Up to the high school, um, seniors are out of the building, so it's just a little bit quieter and nicer around there. It's still kind of sad because you're missing those spaces that you see around, but, um, we have aspire testing wrapped up last week, so we've got some makeups going on right now. Uh, AP testing is still going strong, so we're finishing that up as well. Like Bruce, we got graduation this week, Thursday at seven, uh, scholarship night is tomorrow at six, uh, in the gym. And, um, we just had teacher appreciation week last week, um, the Saints have some great stuff lined out for teachers, they had an ice cream bar one day, potato bar, uh, the other one. Gave them all their favorite snacks one day, uh, you, you can see what our method is to, uh, please teachers to go through their stomachs. So, uh, we did that last week and that was good, I know we should do it more often, but, um, I know they all appreciated, appreciated that last week. And one thing I wanted to give a shout out to, I know we got these guys up here, but, um, if you didn't see the thing about the choir, I know Bailey, I think, posted on the district site. Miss Williams sent an email, they got a chance, an opportunity to perform with the U of A choir and perform, um, the piece that was commissioned in, in remembrance of Miss Williams' father. So if you guys get a chance, check that out, it's really a neat thing and, um, I know it meant a lot to her and to her kids to get to perform that. I saw it with the choir at the U of A, so check that out if you get a chance, so that's really all I've got, let her, her do the fun stuff here.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, thank you all.
Like Bruce said, I counted his girls in, they're all our girls, so the Hunt, the, the Huntsville School District girls were thirteen CNAs. And I wanted to give a shout out to none of you because they were our clinical site. Dr. Embry and now, um, posted the girls so they could do, do their stuff there. I want to talk about the common packing specialties, Lou Thompson, our best in butterball, uh, they came to the high school here recently to talk about job opportunities through them after kids graduate. There's two, they're not sitting here, but two that's actually starting to work, intern was Lou and he's, he's training them and they're eleventh graders, so he's training them how he wants them. You know, not that Frank, Mr. Ringle didn't do a good job, but everybody has their own way of doing things, so that's really, really, um, impressive. They were impressed by them, the boys showed up with resumes in hand, ready to go, so it made me smile really big to, to see that because that was really good. Some of the C and A girls have already, we could have C and A boys, if any of them would do it. But, uh, they've also got some job opportunities as well, uh, so that's, that's really exciting. These kids are getting, getting jobs before they even graduate, so they're getting hired. Trap shooting, I got to drive the bus to the pig truck for the first time. Nobody died, nobody cried, nobody threw up, so, uh, it was funny, I don't know if y'all know Brett White, but he gets on the bus and he says, you driving this thing? I said, yes, he said, have you ever driven this thing? Well, it was the first time for everything, Brett, he said, yes, ma'am, and I wouldn't sat down. But it was, it was fun, uh, I do want to give, uh, we have one of our squads play six out of a hundred and twenty-six squads, this is at Jacksonville, Arkansas, they will compete at the state tournament in June. Logan Wallace, who is an eleventh grader, I think the tenth grader, fifth grader, he tied for third place, he shot a forty-eight out of fifty. Aiden Armour, who's a ninth grader, ninth graders are killing it, he tied for first, he had a perfect score, he shot fifty out of fifty. And so he, both of those boys get to go back and compete at state, so that was, that was really cool, I really didn't know, I'm on half the time, but they did and they were having fun, so. There were five hundred and forty-two shooters total, so to get third and first, even if it was a tie, it's still, still amazing for, for those kids, so. That was, that was really fun and it was, it was an experience that I'm going to write that in my book someday, so. I think I've done everything now.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Yes.
I'll be sure, uh, we're just at the middle school, we're finishing up our makeup testing, we, the flooding kind of, uh, put us back a little bit, we had several kids miss because of the flooding on Thursday. So we're trying to get all those wrapped up. We are actually celebrating teacher appreciation this week because we had a testing last week, so we didn't feel like it would be the best week to be celebrating teachers. And so we're, uh, going all out this week and, and celebrating them and, you know, we can't thank them enough, they, they put in the work every day and it's just, it's just awesome to be a part of, so. I know we, we do some stuff for them this week, but, uh, it's never going to be enough, they, they put forward the effort for sure. How about Mr. Taylor, that, uh, I mean, how can I not learn something in his class, he's so captivating and just, he does a great job with those kids and, uh, so proud of that yearbook program. And, uh, even this year's yearbook is, is great, they always put together, uh, pretty good books, so, um, very proud of them. We've got our fifth grade tour coming up, May sixteenth, and then arena scheduling for those eighth graders, May twenty-third, so.
Thank you, Matt.
Intermediate school, we completed the ACT aspire testing, we have fun and field day coming up, fifth grade's going to middle school, second grade's coming to H, uh, H I S to tour. And we're just finishing up the school year, preparing for next.
Well, they're down on fun field day.
Fun and field.
Is Mr. Kane in a non-ten day or anything like that?
I think I'm busy.
No, the football field and the gym are reserved.
For Mr. Kane and second day.
Nothing moves on the practice field.
Thank you, Mike. You can say which word.
Y'all have anything to share?
Got Harry back there in the back, Harry?
Oh, but Harry slipped in there.
I slipped back in here. Yeah, I seen it, yeah. Now, fuel's out of control, but nowhere in this week, so we're, we'll take it. You know, we broke a record this last month, I thought we paid over four dollar a gallon for diet diesel, so that's just crazy.
Twelve thousand, what did I say, I've got an exact number.
Now, we do have an update on the buses that were back in the fall, should have got them in March or April, now they're saying June, July, so maybe we'll have them for summer, I, I hope, maybe for football season.
Air conditioning?
On the last buses, on the last buses. Yeah, well, we were back in September, October, yeah, we should have got them in March, they keep pushing us back, he says air conditioning's what's killing everybody.
We got the little ones.
Yeah, we got the little ones, but the big, the four big ones, we haven't got yet.
Price stay the same?
Yeah, price the same, nothing, nothing changed on that one.
But the little ones have already been a big help.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That's all we got.
I'm going to wait till the budget approval.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Well, we're wrapping up federal funding for fiscal year twenty-two and beginning applications for twenty-three, holding title-one meetings throughout the district, um, just to determine the needs of each building. So that's how we kind of plan for those budgets for the upcoming year, um, we hold meetings, we had our first one at intermediate this morning and I thought we had a lot of really good discussions, so that's always something good to go around and, you know, get to speak with each committee. We've got our S R three documentation updated, um, so we've got our updated application and, and all the information up on the website, so we had that meeting a few weeks ago and just, um, you know, trying to wrap things up for next year.
Well, I couldn't put into any better words what we've been up to at Watson Primary in the Scarlet today, um, but we have, um, as you know, started our kindergarten enrollment, so we're already looking forward to next year. And we have kindergarten graduation the twenty-fourth, Laura's got one graduating this year. And so we'll have, um, them separated by pods because they're such a big group, so we'll do the first half at five-thirty and the second half at seven, um, the evening of the twenty-fourth. Field trips as well, and got our second graders headed over to intermediate next week to, to tour that and just trying to finish this year out strong.
I have a first grader that's so excited about going to the park. He's been there before, but it's the first field trip, it's a big deal.
So thank you, Harry, for coordinating that, I know that there's a million requests and we're just so thankful.
Thank you. We're going to wrap it up.
Does it seem like you'll have as big of a class that's coming?
So ti- a typical free enrollment year will hit anywhere between eighty-five and a hundred that come in, it's hard for parents to get off work to come pick a packet up and schedule a screening. We hit about one oh-two, so we're still right there where a typical year is, so I don't, I don't have any indication that it's going to be as large as this year, but.
It was like one forty last year.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're going to settle back to about eight?
I, I'm planning on eight for next year, I love to hit twelve, I mean, really. We'll find space somewhere, we'll find space.
Good deal. All right, new business.
Okay, we have quite a bit of business this month. First, we recently had our twenty-twenty-one audit review, was very pleased with how that went. We had seven findings, all supplemental, nothing that has to be reported to the state. The first one, and I'll just go through them, is Mosaic, and Mosaic is the program that our lunch lady use to, um, where the kids pay for their meals, and this is not something that we can fix due to a software program. So there was a font for that is after consulting with our technology director, the issues is with the limitation of the software, and there's many schools that have the same challenge. Second, we had an outstanding checklist containing checks that were written more than a year ago, and I will be honest, I'm an employee that's guilty of that, had a reimbursement and didn't ever cash the check. And then it's just gone, so, uh, Tina's working to take care of that through the state treasure hunt, there are several. We had a journal entry not approved by me and that's just been a stack and one lived without getting a signature. We had a check that was coded discolored when it should have been coded to program funding, uh, that's something that can be easily fixed through coding. We had one S R purchase that was not properly approved, and so we can ensure that all purchase orders are approved. We had a receipt that was not identified as account receivable at year end, and this has happened before, it happened in the rollover of the year. And then we had a check that was selected for an employee vendor testing that could not be located and we really feel like it was probably just misfiled. That was it, so we had to have audit findings, this is a manageable amount of things.
Who found it?
We have an auditor that comes every year and stays with us a couple of months.
Several a year.
Do we have several checks every year that are written and then not to make the federal cashing? Would that be a lot?
Yeah, it happens, yes, they get lost in the shuffle, people are used to getting things direct deposited, then they get an actual check and they just don't think about cashing it, so, so, yeah, it happens. Things get lost in the mail.
And now our, um, check stubs are emailed out, but a couple of years ago, your stub looked the same as the check and you had to open it, that's when I lost mine, I thought it was my case stuff.
Please you to do that.
Yeah, yeah, we, we have that problem too, yeah.
Well, just to speak to the Mosaic software, it's something as simple as the state's looking for a program that will automatically make a manager change of password after so many days. Our program does not force them to change it after so many days. And we don't own that program, it's just who we use for our food service, and so that, that's a limitation on their software. So i- it's not anything major, it's just something as simple as that, as, you know, they think that, the state thinks that you should force a password change after so many days and the program doesn't force that.
Yeah, I was, I sat through the audit findings, um, when we, when we met and very minimal, um, and as far as an audit goes, it was a very, very minimal findings, I mean, it's, it's a good audit, so it's just, uh. Auditors always do a thing, so that's your job, so. It was, it was a very good one, so.
These were all things that we could identify and fix the, the problem.
That's why you know it's very good. Is there any question, any more questions about that?
We know that that Mosaic software is going to be on the audit every year until they do fix them, yeah.
The auditor actually told us that. Okay. Next audit.
Well, they still didn't approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sir. Need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one audit review.
Let me do motion.
First, Lenora. Second, Kyle, or Terry, I'm sorry, Terry, all in favor?
Hi.
Oh, carry.
Okay, next, I need board approval to move money from our village account to our account that we pay those bills out of. And also, we need approval to close the original village account. We, after this next payment, will have depleted that account and move on to our second lien bond account. So, um, I'm asking for approval to move the money and to close that account.
Make a motion, first, uh, Kevin. Second, Dwayne, all in favor? Motion, carry, first and last.
That's right, it, it didn't need to be two motions.
I think as long as the wording is in there both, it'll be fine, Tina, do you agree? We've got it in the minutes, it's all for free.
Too good with that.
This cornerstone that we're, where we're getting there.
Well, the second lien bond money is there as well, but this particular account we need to close is also at cornerstone.
It's just a count, it's just a mechanic.
Yes. Uh, next, calendar approval, special thank you to Tracy Brands T B C for putting these calendar options together. This, there's a colored COVID version there, um, she does a great job communicating with the principals and admin team and myself about different options and then she sends it out to vote. And calendar one was, um, the calendar that the staff has voted on, so I'm asking for approval of calendar one.
Seems like August fifteenth is so early. Seems late to me.
You know, we had the whole stall, the reason we're so late in proving this is there was, um, it was going to be that we couldn't start two weeks prior to Labor Day and that's on hold for another year. And that's what delayed us in planning for the calendar, Chad was all ready to go once and we had to back up and recruit, then we're able to move in forward again.
And they just, they started so early so we can, so that the nine weeks work, is that why?
But part of it is you need, it's hard if your semester does not end before Christmas.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, and a lot of our staff liked to have that whole week at Thanksgiving and a good chunk at Christmas. Tracy, you want to add any comments?
Didn't we start eighteen last, last year, was that right?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay. Okay.
Um, and starting the twenty-second, which is what it would have been had that bill passed effectively, um, it was like a culture shock because it put us to like the first week of June. Unless it took out a bunch of days. So we thought this year with backing it up at least a week from that, then maybe the following year when it comes into effect, it won't be as much of a...
Shock.
A shock, yeah. Yeah. So that's kind of how we went the, the week, the weekend of fifteen.
Well, I mean, part of the reason I was asking is they, they moved our county fair back two weeks. And we were thinking, oh, yay, we won't miss school for the county fair. We'll still be out. And then now you're still... Now we're still missing school for the county fair. So that first week. That's been the conversation in our, in my circles anyways. It's okay, but I, I just want to be able to understand. We got to move this earlier. We're going into June. I don't want to go to school in June anyway, so it's... I'm just asking. And I'm not upset. I mean, I'm not challenging, just asking.
Other options started on the win, I believe. And as a teacher, I always like to ease into that first week. But, um, there's, there's several different things about this calendar that make other things desirable.
Okay.
And hopefully we won't have to do an addendum later on in the year due to snow next year, as we did this year.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the calendar.
First, by Kyle.
Second.
Second, by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion carried.
Okay, next.
Thank you, Tracy, for your help. Thank you.
Is an addendum to both the classified and certified salary schedule. I want to explain what this is. A couple of months ago, we got approval for the career coach position. And that's a set salary that is fifty percent grant funded the first year and seventy-five percent funded the second. Well, I said that backwards. We would do seventy-five percent the second year. Well, in conversations with other superintendents, I said, how are you putting that on your salary schedule? Because it's not something that's going to be on an index because it's a set amount for both years. So, um, some districts weren't going to do anything. In this position, we don't know yet if it will be classified or certified because if it's someone from industry that's hired at the position, it would be on the classified salary schedule. But if it's a certified teacher, it would be certified. So kudos to Jonathan for doing a lot of research and reaching out. And I spoke to some other superintendents, and this is what we have come up with that we feel is the best thing to do, is a footnote to both salary schedules. So let me read this out loud. It says, please add a statement below to our current Huntsville salary schedules, both the certified and classified, as a footnote of clarification. This statement will appear on the index page of the certified salary schedule and on the first page of the classified salary schedule. And so here's what it will say. Grant-funded salary positions will be paid as stipulated by the grant memorandum of understanding and/or grant agreement parameters for the link, term length of the grants. These positions may not be reflected on the normal salary schedule, but will be disclosed according to standard practices and procedures. And, you know, we have some other employees that are paid with grant funds, um, such as Twenty-First Century, or, um, we have an MOU with the U of A for our, our garden girl. But they're not our contract. And this position will have a contract. So I, I just felt like there needed to be something to explain that. So that's what that is.
Is this something that had to go through PPC?
No, and we clarified that today because it's not a change of money or anybody's contract. And Jonathan researched that, and I spoke with Tracy to make sure she and Michelle were in agreement.
They're poking on you back there.
Yeah.
And I did send it out to PPC just so if they had questions or comments before tonight, that they could share that, so.
And the term length is two years of a grant?
Yes.
Well, and, uh, can I...
Please, yes.
I worded it so it was kind of generic so that it's not necessarily just attached to this, this grant. It, it would be attached to any grant funded position that would come along later on.
Right.
So I didn't feel like we, you should name the specific grant you're talking about in this.
So how will they be disclosed? Because you said that they'll have to be disclosed according to standard. Is, is that on the website or...
Yes, so they, since that position is going through our payroll, it's going to be part of, you know, it'll be on the...
It'll be on the list of everybody's getting a contract or, yes.
Okay, okay. I just felt like there needed to be something on our salary schedule that matched this position. But it's not going to be on an index, so I just wanted something there.
Well, we just got done with you speaking earlier. That's an audit situation, correct?
Quite possibly.
I mean, if you don't.
The employee would still be listed in that list of salaries where it's named and listed. So I think we would probably be fine just having that. But this way, it can tie back to a position that's on the salary schedule. So if y'all are in an agreement, I would like an approval for that footnote to be added to those salary schedules.
Make a motion.
Make the motion.
First, by Terry.
Second.
Second, by Lenora. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, next is our certified recruitment and retention plan. Uh, we had this plan this year. Um, I feel like it was a wonderful thing for our certified staff. And I would like to ask for board approval to have that same certified recruitment retention plan in place again for next year using ESR three funding. Um, it was twelve hundred dollars at the beginning of the year for coming back, twelve hundred that they would receive in November that was based off attendance. Um, and then in May, the, the last payment, and also based off attendance.
Is there any changes from this current year?
Um, the only thing that the way the percentage fell, it did change the amount of days that they could be absent in that first, um, time period. So under the plan, certified staff missing no more than six and a half contracted days, not including, you know, professional development, jury duty, things beyond their control. Military leave, we had, we did run into that situation. And then no more than ten and a half days in that last section between November seventh and April twenty-eighth.
Didn't we have some that didn't get it?
I'm one of them. Yes. Um, we had people who, if they missed more than their days, didn't get it. And a lot of those situations were COVID. Like my situation is I was out for COVID, but you couldn't, you'd be double-diffing if you got both. I had COVID leave, so I was reimbursed for those days. But I wasn't in a situation where I could say I was, you know, on-site where kids were. So, um, and that, that was fine. I mean, I was compensated in a different way. And we had several staff run into that, and I felt terrible for those staff members because they couldn't be here because of COVID, but...
Which can do.
But they were being paid a different...
But the COVID thing would have been the only reason? I mean, as far as they didn't just not show up or whatever. Now I just wonder if it's incentivized or make them, you know, that they came and they didn't miss days just so they could get that.
I think it helped, and I would need principals to speak more to this. We, we still had some not get their money due to days, but it may have been, you know, illness and other reasons beyond that.
You don't have a percentage.
Well, and they get the twelve hundred dollars at the beginning of the year. It's no days. It's just coming back, huh?
So, I like, I like it's a good plan.
Did, Principal Zani, do you want to speak to staff and...
I'll say, I mean, it was definitely talked about throughout the year. I mean, people are looking at their days. And I, I know several are checking with secretaries. I just want to make sure where my days are at. Um, so yeah, it's definitely an incentive for them to be there every day.
I know of an instance of one employee that she felt like she had another job opportunity, but she felt like this incentive was enough for her to stay.
True.
And so she stayed with us this year.
That's why you do it.
Well, that's why I was just curious if, if they were thinking that, you know, I better come home to work that day and not miss that day because I'm gonna lose.
I, I feel like it helped. I, I can't give you an exact percentage data-wise. I do think it made people more aware of where they were in their days.
Tell me, tell me on board with it.
Truthfully, it's a way to put money in our employees' hands. And using ESR funds is about the only way to do that right now beyond their salaries.
So this is certified? Is there a possibility?
Yep, we're getting to that.
Okay. I was just flipping and couldn't, I couldn't comment.
I'll need a motion. First, by Kevin.
Second.
Second, by Janil. All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion carried.
So the next tab is the classified additional pay. Um, it's called additional pay for, um, COVID-nineteen things. And, and it still lists the extra duties that they will be doing throughout the year in relation to, to COVID. And they will each receive thirteen dollars and fifty cents a day that they are here. So the difference in this plan of certified is classified is just per day. You know, there's not a set amount. Um, and, and they would also receive a check in November. And so our classified staff and certified will be getting ESR money this month on payroll, this, just like they would be in May of next year if this month.
What does that come out to, thirteen dollars a day times?
So help me remember. Michelle, do you have a...
It, I know this check is around twelve hundred-ish.
It's, it was about eight hundred. It probably wasn't that much, but...
Okay. Any more questions on that? Need a motion to approve.
I shall move.
First, by Janil.
Second.
Second, by Lenora.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next, Tanya has all kinds of things for us.
It's really not that long. I'll, I'll hurry, but, um, in your packet is the assurances for the budget. Um, we turn ours in our proposed budget for special ed in June, June first. So I have, that's P seven that has to go in and be approved at this meeting. But in perfect timing with Miss Scarlet being here today because, um, the general education budget is for, um, all students and the special ed proposal budget is for anything above and beyond what general ed already is paying. And, um, you know, we are all about educating students with all needs. Every student can learn. Every student deserves a chance and that opportunity. And so, um, we have students with all kinds of challenges that come to us, um, more and more. Uh, more and more challenges every day that we're, we're getting. Um, we've got even several more coming in next year that are, uh, situations we haven't dealt with before. So, um, but we are excited to do our best to educate them. So what we're paying for with special ed fundings would be, um, this, the one-on-one paralegal Cara. Um, the Braille interpretation machine, um, the supervisor. We have to pay a supervisor to supervise Cara, um, because we don't have a teacher that's Braille certified. So all of that, um, and then the gen ed, gen ed teachers. So they're all forming together to be a team to provide that service to Scarlet. And you could see all of the things that she's doing, so, so it's amazing. But that's what our money, I mean, it's a lot of money. And, um, Tina's always asking me, what are you doing with all that money? But it's expensive, but every student deserves that opportunity. And, you know, we would not want to deny any of that. And what she said earlier is, you know, mom and dad are both alumni, um, from Huntsville, and they're involved in the community, and they're involved in our school events. And, um, we're just very proud of them, proud of them, of their parenting, that, you know, we did something right with them as they came through the system and taught them to be, um, responsible citizens and parents and, and look at them now with their beautiful child. So, um, what your paperwork is there is just assuring that we will use that money for what it's allotted for. So that's what I have in your packet.
And that budget go up from last year?
Not really. They don't, they're not helping me out very much. No.
No, we're not.
I know.
The amount.
The expenditures are going crazy. I, I, I will tell you, lots of therapies going on, and I, and I blame it on COVID, you know. Different therapies that are needed because they missed out on that one-on-one attention. But, um, we have a funded, funding source called RMAC that, um, is really helping us a lot, so. We're, we're staying at work.
Tanya, will you explain to them a little bit about how RMAC works? I was going to put you on the...
No, that's fine.
...take a test. It's study. It's hard.
Some people don't even try to take it, Mr. Ferguson. They're calling that right here.
It's a mighty good.
Sorry.
We use our resources.
So RMAC is a Medicaid program, and, um, what they do is that we have a training and certain people that are not paid, I hope I say this right, if you're not paid with fun, uh, federal funds. Is that right? Yes. Then you, you're eligible to be a part of it. Um, and so what they'll do is they, like, if you have been trained, Dr. Yancey, you've been trained, they may send you a moment of time study and say, what were you doing on May fourth at two-thirty? And you just kind of answer back on their email and say what you were doing. And if it had anything to do with, um, anything that Medicaid covers, then they will pay the school district back a small portion, um, of that salary. And, um, it adds up quickly. It's very, very helpful. So it's a reimbursement program. Um, Mary helps a lot with paperwork on that. And it, it has really, really saved our lives about paying for our therapies. It's been very helpful. But it takes everybody doing their part, answering those moments, taking the little quiz. It is kind of tricky. They kind of trick you up a little bit, but it's, it's very beneficial to paying, paying for what our kids need. So, but that's not in this budget, but that is part of what we use.
I know that we're bragging on Scarlett too, but I know that some friends of Tara, Ms. Richie, I mean, just seeing her complete all of those training courses on Braille. I mean, I can't imagine learning Braille, you know, and she just doesn't, she loves her song.
Can I just say that she's my niece?
She does it because she loves it so much. It's amazing. It's amazing. It really is.
She has an amazing resource teacher. Uh, Ms. Ruth is her gen ed teacher. We have a supervisor that we contract out, which, you know, we're not used to having to pay for a supervisor of the Braille teacher. And so there's just always little portions of money that we have to pay out to get what we need. But they all work beautifully as a team. Of course, Ms. Ruth is there cheering them on.
Yeah. Very impressive.
So I'm just asking for you to sign those assurances today.
You know, children like Scarlett helping keep them focused, you know, and the people working around her.
I agree.
Well, and it's so good that we can educate Scarlett here so that our gen ed kids, we run kids like Scarlett, see all the things that she can accomplish. You know, that's, that's really important to you. That's, that was, that's what makes our education.
Very inclusive environment is what we're going for, yes.
And that's not something that's done throughout the world. And this inclusive education is, makes what, that's what makes us special.
Very proud of that, true. Very good. Thank you, Tanya. So I need a, I need a motion to approve the budget proposal and assurances.
I shall move.
First, by Janil. Second, by Kyle. All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion carried.
Okay, next, Coach McCullough and Coach Williams, if y'all would come up, they want to share with you about a project they're working on.
You don't have to come up.
I think I'll say that. I'm gonna let Coach Williams lead me. Can I take the lead on talking about this? Because he's done a lot of research on this and can share the information with you. Got a packet there for you guys to look at.
Uh, uh, first of all, I'm not here asking for money. I'll just, I'll go ahead and say that right now. I'm just, uh, I met with, uh, Ms. Campbell, Coach McCullough, and I did a couple of, a month ago. And, uh, and one of the things that, that I think would be really good and, and really good for the community, not just for the football team, and, and, uh, you know, you see in your packet, it, it talks very little about football. There's a lot of community stuff in there, but just a turf proposal, um, how a turf, uh, turf could help, help us, help the community and help, you know, like, uh, it'd be one of the biggest classrooms used on campus because, you know, everybody would be able to use it, um, uh, you know, from, you know, PE classes to, you know, uh, all the Pee-wee teams, uh, Fun and Field Day that's coming up. I mean, there, there's all, there's endless of people that would be able to use it. Um, uh, you know, one of the big things is injuries. Uh, you know, I don't know if any of you guys have ever spent much time on the football field, but, but, uh, it's, it's pretty packed like, like concrete. So if you spend a whole, a whole lot of time on there by the, you know, a couple hours, a couple days in, you, you start feeling it in your knees and your ankles and hips and all that kind of stuff. And, and, uh, you know, we've, we've sotted that thing so many times over the years. But basically, a couple, a couple of, uh, weeks ago, uh, I, I'd met with, with... But basically, a couple of weeks ago, I'd met with Ms. Kimball and she said, you know, kind of hold off for a little bit. And so we met again. And when we met again, all I wanted to do was to get information out there. I haven't done anything official, I haven't, you know, I contacted Geo Services just to kind of get an idea of what would need to be done, what a cost would be, all that kind of stuff. And but I haven't, you know, haven't done anything official, I haven't committed to anything. Wanted to meet with her first, get her input on it. And then when she gave me the okay to kind of get information out there, just to kind of gauge interest and see what, how people felt about it and all that kind of stuff. That's what I did on our Facebook page. And if you've read, if you've seen it and read it, there's a lot of positive stuff on it. People are really positive about it. In fact, I haven't looked at it in a few days, but I didn't see anything negative about any of it on there. So it's just, it's just, you know, all kinds of stuff in that packet about, you know, ideas on, you know, we're looking for fundraisers and donations is what we're looking at doing. One of the things that a lot of schools do is, is the logos on the field, the logo packages, where you can get businesses that'll donate so much money to have their logo put on the field. And, you know, if you look in there, all this can be paid over a 10-year period. So it's not something you would have to have all the money upfront. And if we, you know, if we ever decided to do it, it would be, it wouldn't be a loan. It would be like a utility payment is what it would be like. It wouldn't be anything where, you know, like you have to go out and apply for a loan and have to pay all the interest and all that kind of stuff with that. So really, I don't have a whole lot, I mean, I can answer any questions. I mean, I got a little information, but I wanted to wait and talk to you guys, talk to Ms. Kimball and talk to you guys and let you guys know what was going on before I went too far into this. And as far as, you know, talking to people, just seeing what people's interest is and seeing if anybody would be, you know, businesses would be interested in donating money for logos and that sort of thing. So that's pretty much where we are. You see on that last page on there, it talks about turf fields in Arkansas. And I think this is, you know, this year, you know, we're still on the foray for two more years. And this year, after this season, Gentry and Gravitor already have plans to get turf put on their field next, in the offseason after this coming football season. So, you know, if things hold like that, then us and Green Forest will be the only two schools in the conference without turf. I think we're one of five schools in Northwest Arkansas without turf on our field. You know, Decatur and Prairie Grove and us. And this will be after next year. I mean, I didn't put Gravitor and Gentry on there because after next year, there'll be five of us. So I can't remember the other two right off the top of my head. But there, you know, it'll be West Ford, West Ford and Prairie Grove, that's right. So anyway, that's pretty much all I want to just touch base with you guys and let you guys know what was going on. If you saw it on Facebook and you were sitting there going, well, I don't know where this is coming from. So that's kind of, that's kind of the deal. So I'm not, like I say, I'm not asking for money, I'm not any of that. I just kind of want to, want to get a plan and start talking to people and seeing, gauging what the interest is.
Have you been able to have any interaction with any businesses so far?
No, not really. It was kind of a deal where when I posted on Facebook and then, and then it was, it was like, hey, wait, let's wait and talk to the board before we go any further. So I really haven't.
Basically, what we'd like is for you guys, for your approval, that if we can do this and if we find a way to do this, that we can go ahead and modify the football field to accommodate turf. If that happens. Well, we only had an idea from one company, just to get an idea of where we would start, and it's about a million dollars.
But you're lucky.
modify the field to put this on it?
Yes. It's not just throwing turf down on top, they've got to dig completely down, remove all of that and drain it. There's like three different layers of rock that they have to do, and they have to build retaining walls and then the padding and the turf on top of that to make sure of things. And it goes up, because the last time we looked at this, you know, this isn't the first time that we've looked at this. A few years ago, under a different administration, we looked at it and it was about seven hundred and fifty thousand. So it's obviously things going up. But it's, you know, it's not something we're one to come in here and say, all right, board, we need a million dollars.
Right, and I've got, you know, I've got two other, like I say, I know I'd have to get two more bids. That was one bid, it's all I've got, and just kind of get an idea. They came and looked, and they're the ones who did the model that you see on the paper, and they sent that to me. And they came and looked and kind of just told me, just gave me a brief rundown. They said that, you know, if they ever wanted, we ever wanted them to come talk to the board, they would do that. But, you know, they just kind of gave us a rundown on what would need to be done. I know that, I've got two other places that I know that I would, I'm calling to get bids from. I get an idea of how it compares, so that's kind of where we are right now.
Do we spend forty-five thousand a year now?
It's probably pretty close, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you've got.
I mean, you're talking about, what your plan is, is you're going to go out, you're going to seek for donors, you're going to see what kind of answers and stuff is out there. And as far as the district goes right now, I mean, you're not asking for anybody.
No.
So, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, have at it.
But I wanted to make sure that it was clearly communicated and that you have the blessing, or not, from the board, because I don't want him to raise all this money and then not be able to change.
Right, that's what I feel.
I saw it on social media and I was, you know, kind of curious about what it was and I thought, well, they'll share it with us.
Right.
To be honest, I didn't realize how much it can prevent injuries, like. I just thought it was pretty and that's what schools do, but now it's even better.
That's the reason.
That's one of the biggest draw schools.
All these other schools are going to it, is you walk out on that turf. It's not like the old AstroTurf where it was basically.
It's soft.
This is, it's cushy.
It's like, yeah, it's almost like walking on a pad.
Yeah.
Got the little beads.
It's a nice thing.
Little beads in it, yeah.
And I mean, yeah, it's, I mean, you know, it would definitely be, and I know, I know from a community standpoint, and, you know, it would bring a lot of, I know with our kids, I've talked to players and stuff, and so they would, it would bring a lot of, you know, excitement and pride and all that kind of stuff and interest and everything else. And so, yeah, that's just, that's just the only thing, is just want to come in and talk to you guys and let you guys know what was going on. Because I know, you know, when I put that thing on Facebook, I, you know, I'm sure y'all are telling me what's going, you know, what the heck is, you know, we, I don't remember talking about this, so.
How far out are they? Like, I know, like, people building swimming pools, they're like two years out. Are they really?
They, I mean, they said that when we, that when we committed, they could do it in fifty to sixty days. I mean, it was pretty, pretty quick turnover. I mean, there's, I mean, I don't think it's a deal where we'd be put on a waiting list or anything. But that would be a question that I would, I mean, definitely have to find out more about that.
What kind of maintenance does it require, you know?
They, every, like, every ten, the bottom gets, you know, they do maintenance on it like every twenty-five years. And on the top turf, the top layer of turf, like every ten years.
You have, basically, all you have, every so often, there's a, some kind of sweeper thing. You know, the little black beads that are in there, I don't know if you've seen those or not. But those have to be kind of repositioned and smoothed out. So, yeah, just kind of rake, sort of, so you have to go to that every once in a while. Those are available to rent or if you want, but.
But like, I don't know, I don't know if you guys, how many of you guys know this? I mean, we paint the field, we stay every Wednesday during football season, we paint the field for, after every Wednesday practice, four games on Thursday, Friday. And I don't know how much, we use.
Paint alone, it's about probably, about probably six thousand dollars. Hold on, that's not including, that's not counting labor. And then you've got, you mow it twice a week.
Water and fertilize it.
Yeah, fertilize it, which they come in once a month and do fertilizer and stuff throughout the entire year. You have a water bill, some months that just, you know, skyrockets. Because you got, you got three sets, four sets of sprinklers down. It adds up constantly.
Was your shirt cut down a long one, wasn't it?
Yes, there. And it doesn't matter how often you go through and irrigate that field, try to break it up. It's just been there so long that it's, it's solid.
And, you know, also, the, you know, we, you know, besides painting it and watering it and all that kind of stuff, I mean, it's, you know, with the amount of area that we have right now, we have to be on that game field, like, all the time. And, I mean, we got, you know, we don't get a whole lot, I mean, so by the end of the season, really about, you know, halfway through the season, that field is in, it's real questionable by the end of the season.
It would also be painted to accommodate soccer.
Right, soccer, see, soccer would, soccer lines would be painted on it, yes. And it's on that, that's on that model too. You can see if you look at it close enough, it's got soccer lines on there. And it would have soccer lines too.
So my understanding is, is what you need, you need an approval from us if there is donor funds.
If we're able to come up with the funds and a plan to do this, are we okay, are you guys okay with us pursuing that?
But there's something in here about eighty-three hundred dollars a month.
Well, what that is, is if you wanted to, I mean, if we got the, if we got donors, like, if donors wanted to pay so much for it, like, you can, you don't have to have the million dollars upfront, you can pay it monthly. And so all I did was put on there, if we didn't get, if it was a million dollars for ten years is, you know, eighty-three hundred dollars a month. I just put a ballpark on there of what that, what that is. But, you know.
They wouldn't charge interest or anything like that?
That, the way I understand it, no, I mean, it's like a utility payment. You just got, you know, you just pay that money each month until it's.
How much realistically do you think you could raise donor wise?
Well, I mean.
You have fifty thousand dollars here for a logo on end, you think our investor would ever do that?
I mean, possibly, I mean, it's.
That's a sweet bit of a million, yeah.
Right, right, well, you know, and you can get multiple logos put on the field by multiple businesses. And then along the sideline too, down the sidelines, there's, I didn't put this in the package, but he sent me some models or what other schools had done, some examples of what other schools had done and how they had done logo packages, and that's really similar to what they had done. You know, they put logos actually on the field or more than they are on the sidelines. So you can have them all the way down the sideline if you want.
Do you think realistically you'd get half a million?
I mean, I would hope so, I would hope so.
Some of this stuff can be donated as far as like the.
Yeah, there's a page in there that shows you some of the stuff that can be donated. It's all piping and.
The rock.
And rock.
A lot of that sort of thing.
Even if you've got, this is just me talking.
Right.
But even if you got half a million, drop payment out of, say, four thousand, you're looking at, that's how much you're spending a year just on, you know, maintenance of the current field.
Sure.
So, I mean, it's a wash and you end up with this product.
That's just.
And, I mean, we've got plans for fundraisers and things like that that, you know, we're going to try to raise some of the money too. But, you know, it's going to, raising a million dollars is probably not, and fundraisers is, but with donations and fundraisers, I think that'd be something that would be doable. But we would have to talk to people to figure out who wanted to, you know, who wanted to do what and that kind of stuff.
Basically, very early preliminary stage for anything even happening.
So what you're looking for today is our blessing to ourselves.
Yes, sir.
I don't want them to spend all this work and energy to raise all this money and then not be able to modify the field.
Well, and I, you know.
But we're not making the decision to do that tonight, we're just saying.
Basically, basically, I'm letting you guys know, since you saw it on Facebook and you're kind of wondering, what is this all about? Well, this is me telling you what this is all about. Yeah, because, you know, I don't, I don't, because that's what I, when I met with her, that's what I was wanting to do, is wanting her to know before I said anything to anybody else. I talked to, talked about it with Tom, and before I went any further, I wanted to talk to her. And then from there, you know, she told me, go ahead, you're fine, put it on, you know, see what the interest is, and we did that. And then, you know, now that that's been done, I wanted to talk to you guys and make sure you guys knew what was going on.
Well, we got, we got people that are involved in the school, an athletic program, football field. Y'all are willing to do the legwork, you're willing to do the work. You're willing to do the work, you're willing to go out and see and talk to these people that's trying to make something better for this school in history. There is no reason whatsoever that we're not going to support that.
Right.
So, in my opinion.
But we're not agreeing tonight, though, to spend eighty-three hundred dollars.
No, no, you guys aren't spending the money. The school, it's not going, the school is not going to put money in them.
That's right, we're not asking for money, we're just, we're just agreeing that.
Donations and fundraising.
We're agreeing that if, if they are able to raise the money to do this to the field, that we as a board are making an approval that they can go ahead and continue that if that money is raised. That's why this.
That'd be great.
Yeah, exactly. So.
Well, that's all, that's all I want to do, is let you guys know what was going on, so we all be on the same page.
No, let's just put it in the minutes that.
Can you do that?
What just took place? Our blessing.
And what I plan on doing is, what I plan on doing is, is talking to some other business, you know, a couple other people that do turf, getting some ideas, and then, and then just trying to start talking to businesses and see what.
Is that we had to start somewhere.
Yeah.
And he done a, I thought, an excellent job of doing the early research on it just to see where we stood, so.
Great, thank you, John.
Thank you, guys, appreciate you.
Thank you both.
So Tina, what are you writing out to have in the minutes? I want to make sure that we're all on the same page on that.
Write it back.
Not just a journal or anything.
I'll just put something like, board agrees for football coaches to.
Continue with fundraising or.
Yes, donations, community donations.
And then. And the board is in agreeance that if funds are raised, then we are good for them to.
Pursue.
Pursue and make, you know.
But it'll have to come back to us eventually.
But again, I didn't want them to do all that work and start getting people pledging. Fine group of kids has waited so patient.
Tina, you just let us know whenever you think you're good, like.
No pressure.
Okay, all right, Audrey, your name.
Okay, this fine group of kids needs to be bragged on. Mr. Wrinkle, I want you to do that. But they also, I think, need to go somewhere, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, tell us all about it.
Well, they have worked very hard. The automotive, the diesel and the welding have done several community projects, some for the school, some for our, like, some for the community. And they have also achieved first in third in diesel. They have achieved first in Quiz Bowl, and they were asked to compete in place of another school that can't go to nationals and open an inclusion ceremony. And Mr. Keith McKnight from State asked us to do that. So we're asking for permission to go on that trip. And Ms. Haley has a presentation for you guys about what all we have done.
That's right.
So this is our, most of our skills group. We have one gold of 2021 and 2022 in Chapter of Excellence. And we have throughout the year. No, you're fine.
But as Haley was saying, we, we got gold in Chapter of Distinction, which is in all the projects, how we keep the meetings in order and how we've taken care of business so far. So that's out of all the other chapters in the state, I mean, towns, regions, districts.
We are the only chapter distinction in Arkansas.
So, sorry.
No, no.
Throughout the year, we've done several things to raise money, to be able to go to state, which state was in Hot Springs this year. So we've been able to raise quite a bit of money. We've done the homecoming parade, which it had the welding. We had two dinosaurs put on there, which was also for a couple that had gotten some personal items stolen. And we, our welding group had put together two dinosaurs to give back to them and they allowed us to put it on the homecoming parade. As well as our diesel program put a engine on the parade as well. And we have also built the bridge for the primary school. The welding group put that together and built that from different things.
They built it from scratch.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so.
Which is also wheelchair accessible, I have to say.
Yes. Yes. That took about two-ish months to put together and then another week to actually get put in place so it would be able to be used. Um, we help her unload the food trucks and we do it as much as we can. It can, um, we help unload the whole food truck, um, just to be able to help out. It, I don't know how often y'all get food trucks, um.
About once a month and maybe sometimes twice a month. They would come over and help us unload and they've unloaded up to twenty-five hundred cases. So, yes, we very much appreciate them. Anytime we ask them to come help, they're willing to step in. It's, it's awesome to have them there and I'm very proud of this group, very proud of them.
Um, the dinosaurs is what I was talking about with the couple that actually had some property of theirs stolen. We had, our, our welding team had built two dinosaurs as it shows in the picture up there and then our whole team, um, actually at their house when we delivered it. Um, it took about two months to make and it was a really good learning, oh, learning experience for them as a team. Um, we partnered with a few local businesses to get the products that we needed for the dinosaurs. Um, so it was just an overall really good learning experience for the welding group. Um, we also offer detailing for fundraising. Um, we do details just about every day, one to two a day. Um, we charge sixty for full details, which include the interior and exterior clean as well as well as waxing your vehicle. Um, so yeah, that's one of our main fundraising. Um, we get quite a, we get quite a bit of money off of that.
And I wanna add to that too. It's, not only is it a fundraiser, it's a lesson. So they have to detail, they have to be a team and get it done in a day, which is sometimes really tough. Uh, it's customer service, they have to, uh, they have to take care of the customer, they have to schedule the job. And our treasurer, uh, they keep up with the money that we make. Uh, so there's there's a whole lot to it other than just the fundraising. So it gets a, it's a lesson in running a business, really.
No, I've been trying to get on it. Um, they detailed mine and they did a great, they do a damn great thing.
So this is our officer team as of last year. Um, we just voted in new officers for next year, um, this past, well, two weeks ago on Friday. Um, so this is our whole officer team as well as two people that were not able to be in the photo.
I, myself and Alex here.
Yes. Um, our gold winners at state were Jayden, which was competing in our diesel and he got, um, he received a scholarship, um, as well as.
He got seven thousand dollars from UTI.
Wow.
Was a two-year community college for Arkansas. He got a, a specific scholarship to UTI for a manufacturer. And he will get fifty-five hundred dollars to UTI also for being a part of my program. Those two guys there are the ones that are working with Lou Thompson. And not only did they go with their resumes to meet with their guys, they went with their ASE certifications.
And then, um, our other group, which was the Quiz Bowl, also had won in gold, which is first place. Um, I'm not completely sure on what all they had won as scholarships, but we had those two as in gold winners. And then silver was our opening and closing, which we actually, as Mr. Wrinkle had said, got the opportunity to compete at nationals and opening and closing. So that was an honor to be able to do that. And then customer service was a bronze winner. Um, she will be receiving a half of the two-year tuition.
And when she says she, that's tightly.
Yeah, that's me. I didn't really. So that, we are asking for permission to be able to go to, um, out of state for nationals to compete in our final, um, for our gold winners, which is gonna be the diesel Quiz Bowl and the opening and closing.
And athletic.
And let's add that.
Yes, Dave.
That means there's thirteen skills you have saved people competing at nationals.
Diesel.
It's, it's the most I've ever had.
That's right.
And this group has been the most professional.
We're gonna be driving. We're gonna be driving, okay.
They have been the most professional. We, we took them out to eat at Texas Roadhouse. And before I could get out the door, the lady called and said, hey, that is the best group of school kids we have ever had.
That's awesome.
That's big, y'all. That's great.
I'm almost as proud of that.
Exactly. Well.
And can they go to Georgia, y'all?
Yes, I'm like, thank you.
Second, thank you.
Thank you all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And anyone that is interested in going or participating and seeing what it is about, um, you're more than welcome to come and see what everything is like. So thank you all.
And get your guardie tell before you go.
Thank you all.
Where do you sign up for this, man? I would not hold you to sixty dollars.
I'm trying, call me.
Danny, that's just like.
Oh, yeah, there'd be a surcharge for getting out.
Sixty wouldn't touch it.
We believe your vehicle is ditched by a foreign lawthower.
Yeah, I've seen that a lot. But you did a great job.
Can I say, can I say something?
Absolutely, yep.
Absolutely, I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Joe, guys. I wanna say something before they leave.
I'm so sorry, y'all had to.
Yeah.
I'm glad I left. Pleasure. Congratulations.
I'd like to say.
Danny, thirteen.
Danny, thirteen. I'd like to say something before they leave.
Yes, sir.
This is one of the most spectacular group of young people that you will ever meet. I see them every day and how they compose themselves and how they present themselves to the public. And they are a very, very good attribute for this school. And they had a gentleman come in the other day that truck was twice as worse as yours. And they detailed that thing and looked brand new and he left him two hundred dollars.
Good for them.
Right.
That'd be about fair.
That's the kind of work that those young men and women do.
Well, we're very proud and it's leaders of our community coming up. We're gonna, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Was that you?
Yes, me.
I know we said they could go, but did we get enough?
Yes, we did.
I gotta go.
What, what are we doing here? We had a first, but Kevin second, but Neil, all in favor of that?
Yes, I got it. I don't remember where Audrey was, but I.
I don't. Okay. Now, do you want to move on to? Next time, transfer request?
Just need a motion for transfer. And you have both regular board to board and then also the school choice transfers need as well.
Is that normal to have that many right now?
I looked back for several years and this is more than we had in the past few years. About four or five years ago, there was a high number as well. Most of those kids have never been here and there's a cover sheet on the, the, um, school choice that explains specifically.
So, sixty-seven students, but forty.
Would be, would be three percent. That's the number we can pull off.
But, right, but forty-five of those never even been here.
Correct.
Right.
So that's a huge difference. Forty, forty-five of those have never attended this district. Is that correct?
Correct.
But twenty-two.
What's it say when it says withdrawn? They decided not to switch? Right. They, after they kind of, then they decided not to. Okay.
Any questions on that?
Oh. Well, and so many of these are young kids. Something we struggle with in hospital is having after-school care. You know, and I've said that several times, is if you, many of us drive to Springfield and Springfield every day to work and if there's not after-school care that'll keep kids till five-thirty or six, which there's not, nobody will keep them till six. Five-thirty is the latest you can get. You know, if you have a young kid and you don't have after-school care that'll keep them till you all part, they'll transform. I mean, it's.
What do you do?
You, you, you take them, you haul them to Elton's or majority of.
Or something like this. It's go to the Springfield.
Yeah.
And it's people probably in the Heinzville area.
Yeah, it's just.
Or Tim and Alex.
We just, we just don't have, that's something that we just don't have in hospital. There's not, there's just not enough spots for after-school care and, and those spots don't, you, you don't have the opportunity to stay late.
But only eleven of the students on the school choice are current students.
Yeah, yeah, that's big.
Yeah.
So we're not even getting any money right now for those that aren't even enrolled. So, okay.
So the eleven would be the only ones.
That makes, okay. I wanna go calling a whole class.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the transfer request.
Make the motion.
First, for Nora, second, for Wayne, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, next. Need a motion to approve personnel resignations, hires, transfers and renewals.
Danny, can we make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel, please?
Okay, this may.
You don't make a motion to go.
No, but.
No, I just wanna say one, go. Sign a motion. Not a motion.
So we're going to go to the executive session? Okay, so you talk about personnel.
Personnel.
Onto personnel resignations, hires, transfers and renewals. I need a motion to accept. First for Dewayne, second by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Resignation, starting out with certified Natalie Isell, Huntsville Intermediate School teacher, effective June 30th. Megan LaMonte, Huntsville High School teacher, effective April 26th. In this particular situation, I want to explain, she applied and was hired but then has withdrawn her application and got a different job. So she's never actually worked here. Casey Castile, Huntsville Middle School East facilitator, and that date changed to May 20th instead of June 30th. Karen Ruth, who was with us tonight, Watson Primary School, June 30th, and it's a retirement. And we have another retirement, and she's not here with us tonight, but Dr. Sheila Trinkle, Assistant Principal at Middle School and Intermediate School. And Sheila has done so much here throughout the years, and many things that were, she did quietly, you know, behind the scenes, lots of work with our homeless program and just many hats, very thankful for what she's done. Classified Chelsea Canyon, Huntsville High School, School Administrator, and that was effective April 22nd. Betty Laird, Huntsville High School Food Service Worker, and this is a retirement on June 30th. Kim Cole, Huntsville Intermediate Schools Fed Paraprofessional, effective June 30th. And Lindsay Duncan, Huntsville Middle School Custodian, effective May 20th. Hires. Certified Brittany Robinson, Watson Primary School teacher, effective July 1st. I'm going to go ahead and say all of these will be effective July 1st. Drew Robinson, Huntsville High School Social Studies Teacher/Coach. Taylor Allen Marlowe, Huntsville Intermediate School teacher. Olivia Myers, Huntsville Intermediate School teacher. Amber King, ESOL teacher at Huntsville High School and Huntsville Middle School. Maddie Mueller, Fed Teacher, Watson Primary School. Nick Coulter, Huntsville Middle School Teacher/7th Grade Basketball. Kayla Hawkins, Huntsville Intermediate School teacher. Erin Lake, Huntsville High School Science teacher. Nicole Hallmark, Watson Primary School teacher. Classified Kylie Marshall, Fed Paraprofessional, Huntsville Intermediate School. Brianna Crowder, Fed Paraprofessional, Watson Primary School. Shannon Cook, Fed Paraprofessional, Watson Primary School. And Glenda Willis, Watson Primary School Custodian. Transfers. Certified Shawnee Bensonson, from Huntsville High School Classroom teacher to Huntsville High School Classroom teacher/Instructional Facilitator. Classified Rebecca Burton, Huntsville High School Secretary to Huntsville High School ABSCAM Administrative Assistant, effective May 10th. Allison Dotson, Huntsville Intermediate School teacher to Huntsville Intermediate School teacher/ Huntsville High School and Middle School Cheer Coach. And Dana Phillips, Huntsville Middle School Secretary to Huntsville High School Secretary, effective July 1st.
Okay. Any other board comments, questions and/or discussion items?
I actually have something that I'd like to say.
Yes ma'am.
Some of you might know that this might be one of our last meeting, mine it is personally, probably, unless something happens with the election. So this will be the last time I sit up here, but I wrote something and just wanted to share with y'all. It's been my privilege to serve on the Huntsville School Board for the last six years. In that time, we have accomplished so much as a district and community that I know will be remembered for lifetimes. Like many of those who are currently running for school board, I wanted to be on this board as a way to bridge the gap between administration and teachers and bring back the unity back to the community. I've spent countless hours away from my family, talking with staff members, concerned community members and everyone in between. I've always tried to be a listening ear when I could. Going into it, I had a preconception of things that I was going to do as a board member. I learned very quickly that many things I thought I could do is not what a board member does. Our role as a board member is to oversee the school's finances, handle policies and procedures, choose a superintendent if ever needed, oversee certain purchases or things needed for the buildings and transportation. Our goal as a board is to ensure that the highest quality of education is provided to our students. I truly and wholeheartedly believe in this administration. I know that every day they come to work to do the best that they can for everyone in this district. I've seen the tears and heard the distress in their voices when they absolutely felt that they've given all they could and it still wasn't enough. I know all too well that feeling because I guarantee you, along with every board member here, just felt that exact same way. At the end of the day, we are human and we're going to make mistakes. We just have to know that we gave all we could and what we had to make the best decisions possible. I've sat here many nights at the same spot and cried alongside families, knowing that what decision I was making wasn't always the easiest. And of course, not everyone is going to agree with everything you do. If we all had the same opinions on everything, there wouldn't be a need for a board. There are so many limitations of what we can do and what we can say. There's been so many times I've wanted to shout from the rooftops different things and had to sit here quietly knowing that I couldn't. From being a member of this board, I've learned many things, but the biggest one will always be that you're not going to make everyone happy and that's okay. Through the years, I've worked with each of these board members and have the utmost respect for each one of them. They're good people who truly care about the students and faculty. I have no doubt that they are here to make a difference and I hope and pray that they get to continue doing so. Fellow board members, thank you. Thank you for the words of encouragement when we all felt defeated. Thank you for always putting this district first and thank you for your friendship. Audra, thank you for stepping in to a role that you had no help for two and a half years. You've lasted through a worldwide pandemic and other things. You've done it with grace and a positive attitude and I'm so proud of you. Thank you to all of the faculty and staff members who have been so amazing to work with. Seeing the pride on everyone's faces as we got to visit, it's evident that everyone's goal is the betterment of the students in this school. Watching everyone give their all to make it happen, no matter the circumstances, solidifies that this school is doing amazing things. It truly is inspiring. The list of accomplishments from each school is too long, but I promise you, every single person is moving mountains and the future is very bright. Making a difference and leaving a legacy is our vision statement and I truly believe that we live by that as a district. To our community, thank you for your continued support of this district. They honestly can't do anything without it. I encourage you to show up, be involved, give support and don't believe everything you read. Again, thank you to everyone for your support these last six years. I will forever be thankful for the opportunity to serve this district.
Thanks. Any other comments anybody has?
Well, I have something I want to share real quick.
Sure.
As you know, we work closely with North Ark for RCTE programs and we have struggled to find an automotive teacher for St. Paul for our small age class. That has been posted since last July and had several, not really that many, but a few people interested. We have finally secured a teacher. We just have to hope that nothing falls over before next fall, but this summer, we're going to have three classes down there, open to the public. And we have a flyer, we'll be pushing this out, but, Urs, do you want to talk about this or do you?
Well, yeah, I'm just very excited. We addressed this at our parent night with the community. We're going to have three nights in June on Tuesday night, each Tuesday. One night is going to be kind of like a chainsaw maintenance and routines on a chainsaw. Each night will be two hours, six to eight. The next night, we're going to have like side by side utilities, maintenance routine, repairs on them, just doing some maintenance on them. And then I believe the final night is going to be like bringing your truck in to do some brakes and shocks and things like that. So we're very excited on that.
So it's June, and again, we'll push all this out on social media, but June 7th, Tuesday, June 7th is the ATV routine maintenance Tuesday, they're all Tuesdays. Tuesday, June 14th is chainsaw and outdoor power equipment and the 21st is automotive brakes and shocks.
Come down, I know most everybody up here probably knows a lot more about that stuff than I do, but I'm going to be in the class myself, so if you're interested, come down.
We're excited to use the building.
Very excited.
It was disappointing that we couldn't find a new structure this year.
But we're excited, we're going to get it going next year.
Yeah, and we're, we have a meeting actually this next Friday, looking at doing a summer workforce of some sort with the building up here, and it will probably be something in the medical field. So North Ark has just been a really great partner to help and we're doing this through their workforce program. And it's not like a certificate that you can go to work with, but it's just a learning opportunity to get the community in our buildings that we're so thankful for.
Very good. Thank you, Audrey.
Congratulations. Yes, so tomorrow night, and if I say a time wrong, correct me, tomorrow night the scholarships, 6:30 at the gym.
Six.
Six at the gym. Thursday night, Huntsville graduation here on the football field. And Friday night is graduation at St. Paul in the gym. And our baseball team plays Friday at 3:00 in Nashville. Busy week.
Just a five hour drive.
And it's not a straight trip.
No easy way, no easy way to get there.
And then the next week, we have our kindergarten graduations. Busy times, but good times.
Anybody else have any comments, questions?
I would just like to say, nothing as graceful as Portland or Ohio, but I'm very proud of all of you guys and consider you a friend and proud of the accomplishments that this board has done and what we've been through together. And I'm proud to be a part of that, so just want to say thank you. And thank you to all you guys for everything that you guys do every day. You're down in the ditches and y'all is what makes us code district what it is. About you, no matter who the board is, about y'all. About you, it don't matter who the board is, without y'all, it's just a regular old school. Y'all make it what it is. Thank you guys.
And I have a motion to adjourn, but Duane?
Second.
Second, Madam President. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.